So that's the way I found my flight with you last night. Like I said, I've been traveling so much. About two, one every week?
Yeah.
That's what I'm told. Same.
The decade survey. Sorry, are you corporations just calling? So if it was six, seven, eight. Yeah, let's just tell everybody, all these numbers are coming in. All this stuff. But then that kind of like, oh, three, two, one.
Yeah, well, why? So we get on the next to fly.
The boys are gonna be leaving.
I think the back corner.
It's for them to get more money compared to what they're doing.
Yeah, they were.
It's a terrible standard.
They're the ones on the tripod.
It should be Clark is Clark represent. Clark represents the public. Both PC two and.
Maybe there are a couple extra. Yeah, those gimbal cameras. Gotta be a frugal TV product. C span.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, P span.
Never been a great. Did they? Oh, my. Oh, that's. It's horrible. Get out there. Yeah, that's probably opposite. I think there's a PC two.
And there are meetings for live stream to.
Yeah.
He's got his own channel.
You didn't watch me late for the summer.
I brought my soul to war.
We usually have something to give our money on this.
Where do you hear you go?
Today, we're just on across the street.
Yeah, I mean, usually I'm not here earlier, but they have probably a lot. We're at the coordinator.
Yeah, just check with me if we're gonna be.
Okay.
Anywhere near. Wait on you. Oh, wait, I think it'll be, I think Tuesday. Wednesday.
Ain't here to stop watch. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please.
Organic food.
Everybody can take your seats. So if we could stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Jamie Jordan.
Here.
Christopher Cool. John Dooley.
Here.
Matthew Mutt.
Here.
Derek Poppins.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. And proof of publication, please.
The items were advertised from Tampa Bay times on May 2nd, 2025 and June 25th, 2025 or by Applegate of certified millions and.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I'd like to welcome everybody today with the planning commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and we meet twice monthly. Once here and once in the West Pasco. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners our recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings and conditional use requests. The planning commission is the final decision making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the planning commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate county commission meeting. Those of you who are not familiar with the format of the meetings, let me go over them quickly for you. We have three sections. First one being continuances and if the staff, if we, as we go down our list of applications, if the staff or the applicant requests a continuance for any number of reasons, it's been our tradition to approve those requests for extension unless they're extenuating circumstances. Then we have consent agenda. Those are the items that we will go through and as we bring them up, if you have something that you would like to talk about with regard to that item, raise your hand and we'll pull it from consent and we'll discuss it today. Otherwise, as we go through the consent agenda, anything that isn't pulled will remain on consent and be voted on at one time. Regular items are those that will be discussed today and the applicants will come forward and make their case. And then people from the public may ask questions. The times are limited to five minutes for the applicant and three minutes for any questioners. And then the applicant will have an opportunity to come up and try to answer any questions that were raised. The, we have a period here now for a public comment, which would be anything that is not on today's agenda. Is there someone here to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda?
We do have one individual signed up for public comment and I'd like to note we have nobody on WebEx today.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Would you come forward, please? You look familiar. We'd have your name and address again, please.
Three, four, one, one, oh, a nice place, Dade City, Florida. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity and good afternoon.
Before you, before you start, let's just take care of everyone at the same one time. If anyone plans to come up and speak today, would you please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn? Pardon me?
She couldn't hear.
Could you, could you please stand and raise your right hand if you plan to come up and speak?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony or rock the.
Okay.
So basically, I want to talk about the 2050 planning meetings. I want to thank the planning department for giving the public the opportunity to go to these. And to go to the maps and info were great. If anybody doesn't know, these are the land use changes for up to 2050 that are going to affect everybody in this county. So I hope more people will attend these meetings. The staff was very great at answering questions. The whole situation, the way it was put together with maps and informations and then people to talk. I think you covered the ballpark of anything we would have as questions in it. I've been to two, I have been to two meetings, basically because the amount of information coming out of it is a lot. And every time I go home, I wake up at 3:00 AM and say, oh, I wonder about this and I wonder about that. So I need to go to another one. I'll probably go to one more yet. But everybody's been great and answered all the questions. But I'd like to say anybody that hasn't gone to one of these meetings for our land use changes ought to try and go. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so before we continue, if you have a phone on you, please take a moment and put it on the silent position or just turn it off one way or the other so it won't disturb anybody that's trying to speak or trying to listen. And. Let's see, I think that covers it. Okay.
Right, good afternoon, Planning Commission members. Joanna German, Planning Development and Economic Growth. The first item that we have on continuance is item PC one. It's PDE 25 dash seven, eight, seven, three, a rezoning request in the name of One Lakuchis Center for a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District, R three, medium density residential district, R four, high density residential district, and MF one, multiple family medium density district, to I one, light industrial park district. And this is coming with the request to continue the item to August 7th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to speak on this? Okay. Let's see, we have.
How would you like to act on that one?
Yeah, go ahead and do the next one.
Will we continue on PC one on August 7th?
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve a continuance. If you have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Motion carries. All right, PC two.
An item PC two is PDE 25 dash seven, six, six, six. A zoning amendment in the name of Murphy Road, MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, Oakley Pasco County Property Trust for a change in zoning from RMH Mobile Home District to AR Agricultural Residential District to MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development to allow for the development of seven, excuse me, 672 single family detached units and platted townhomes and associated infrastructure on approximately 118.82 acres located in southeastern Pasco County. And this item was published on the agenda as a consent item. However, the applicant has now requested to continue the item to August 7th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Mr. Chair, since this one was not noticed as a continuance, I think you need to ask if there's anybody who.
Okay.
Cannot be here on August 7th that wants to speak, that wants to speak to it today. But just as a reminder, they speak to it today, they cannot speak to it again on August 7th.
Okay, is the applicant present, by the way? Okay. Is there anybody here who's here today to speak on this one? Okay, as our county attorney has just said, in case you didn't hear, if you speak today, you won't be able to speak on August the 7th.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure you knew that. All right, so.
I guess the question is, did you want a presentation from staff before or do you just want to hear the public comment?
Let it just be pulled and then go back to the consent?
Say that again?
Or you can pull it, whatever your preference is.
Yeah, we'll just pull it.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna go back to consent. So we got the consent request on the next one, right?
Okay, so item PC three, we're gonna pull item PC two. Okay. Item PC two, excuse me, item PC three, you will be sitting as the local planning agency. PDE 25 dash zero, two, zero, two. A development agreement in the name of homes by West Bay LLC to allow for the developer to design, permit, acquire right of way and construct a portion of Kifer Road and New River Boulevard in exchange for transportation development fee credits in the Village of Pasadena Hills. And this is coming with the recommendation that the local planning agency recommend approval of the development agreement to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, so that's a consent request?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there anybody here to speak on this one? Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Move approval of the consent agenda consisting of PC three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent. Do we have any objections? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Okay. So we'll return to PC two.
And I guess I'll ask the planning commission again, did you want a full presentation from staff or do you want to defer that to August 7th?
Well, there's only one person to question it, so let's go ahead and defer presentation until August 7th. And you can raise your questions now and we'll, if we need to answer them today, we will.
So you want me to state my name and the address and everything?
Yes, sir, please.
My name is Jose Roll Dan. Address is four, zero, zero, four, zero, Lindbrook Drive, Zephyr Hills, Florida, three, three, five, four, zero. So the question I have, being a resident of Zephyr Hills for over 44 years, seeing after the hurricane last year down Forbes Road, the majority of the Forbes Road on the side where there's mostly vacant land had a lot of standing water for six to seven months. And you guys want to build, or whoever wants to build 672 homes and I don't know if the access is gonna be on Forbes Road, but regardless, the building's gotta stop. Like, where's the water gonna come from? I was told, and I'm not sure, that you guys are gonna have to build up six feet. And if you do, because that's kind of like swampland, where's that, all that water gonna go? Is it gonna flow down over Forbes Road and flood those houses? Is it gonna flood our houses? And if that's the case, are you guys gonna fix it when that happens? And then to go from agricultural to like a, the, what do you call it? The MPUD or basically residential type? What is gonna happen to people that have businesses on their property or they have chicken houses on their property to support their families? Are you guys gonna change that too? I mean, eventually, building has got to stop. How is the roads gonna handle it? I mean, I thought you're supposed to build roads before you build buildings and infrastructure. I mean, have you tried getting out, going on 301 toward Tampa? It takes forever now. And we're just getting so many people here. Where is all this water gonna go? Where are you gonna buy the water from? I mean, to my understanding, you guys are already buying water outside of the county. Are you gonna have to keep doing that? Is it gonna dry up all of our wells out there off of Lindbrook and Forbes? Because a lot of people out there have wells. Are you gonna pay for that when it dries up? Because you guys won't stop building. When are you guys gonna stop building? I understand, stay in progress has to happen, but at some point, you have to stop. In Pasco County, taxes are going out the wazoo. Like, we're having to sell some rental property just to stay afloat because taxes went up from 12,000 to 24,000 to 29,000. I hate to see what taxes are gonna be this coming year for our rental property. I mean, what happened to the American dream? The American dream has gone down the toilet and no matter what city you're in, it's just getting crazy. I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat, this stuff has got to stop. And if you people have lived here in this county for some time, you've seen the progress that has happened. And change is good, but sometimes change has to stop. Like, it's just getting to the point that a lot of people that lived in Zephyr Hills and surrounding areas are moving out of state just to get away from all this stuff. So I ask you guys to, and I'm sure this is already in the works because obviously you guys don't care. It's gotta stop. I mean, what else can I say? It just, progress, stop it for now. And I know the moratoriums and all that stuff. When is it gonna stop? Please answer all those questions and thank you for giving me the time.
Well, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry that you said that we don't care. We show up here twice a month. We don't get paid for this. We do it as a volunteer. So I take offense at the fact that you're telling us we don't care. I was born and raised here and a lot of these people were born and raised here. We all care. We have to be equal and we have to be fair minded, no matter what the applicant is and no matter what's going on. If they have a way that they can show us that they can deal with any water issues like that and it makes sense. We have four engineers on this board. So they can tell you whether they can deal with that kind of stuff or not. I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but they can.
Me neither.
And I'm sure they wanna, they'll wanna make a comment. But I'm offended by what you said there, right there, that last part. So if you will, if you want to come up and respond to some of those questions.
Can I ask a gentleman a question?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Would you prefer mobile homes be developed on the property? Because right now.
I can't hear you.
Would you prefer mobile homes be developed on the property?
It's still the same thing. When is it gonna?
He has the right to do it today. His property zoned RMH for a mobile home park. He's asking to change it to single family detached homes. Now, I haven't heard this case, I haven't made a decision yet.
We don't need anything there.
He's not asking here for the right to build. He's asking for the right to change what he builds. And so I'm asking you, would it be your preference? Because right now, there's an entitlement for mobile homes on the property.
We don't need anything.
Yeah, but he has land rights. Just like when you bought your lot, you had a right to build too. This person has a right to build too. Right now, they have the right to build mobile homes. Is it your preference that they build mobile homes?
I don't want anything, but if it's gonna be mobile homes, I mean, obviously, he or whoever has the power is gonna do what they want to do, what they want to do.
And that's the whole thing. That's why we don't have power to be able to take away someone's rights.
But then why change it to agricultural, I mean, to the MPUD when it's agricultural?
Because they'd like the right to build single family detached homes rather than mobile homes.
So it's actually a less, less dense use than what they're allowed to do currently.
But then that's gonna affect everybody else. I mean, is code enforcement gonna go around and say you can't have a chicken house or you can't do this?
Well, no one said, because they build doesn't mean you can't have a chicken house. I have a chicken house.
Are you agricultural?
Yes.
Okay, there is, but if, because this happened to a friend of mine that they said when he bought it was agricultural and then they gave him the runaround and they wanted to change it to basically residential. And so that's what I'm saying, because code enforcement will come around and say something. And then you gotta fight it again.
Don't we have a chicken ordinance, David?
There's one, there's one in the works, but there's not one adopted one.
That's what I'm saying. So it's, what people are trying to, you know, regardless, people are trying to feed their families with chickens and all this stuff and then.
They're on agricultural property, then they can have their chickens.
But if you change it, because this affects us.
No one's changing anybody else's property.
Anybody else's property is asking to change his own property.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just giving you my input and I can, I understand. I mean, I don't want to see anything, but what am I gonna do?
I think the problem that I have is this. I have a whole bunch of people and I see it all the time. Everybody wants all the building to stop. And listen, I've lived here most of my life too and I've seen a lot of changes here. But at the end of the day, how would you like it if I came and said you can't build on your property? You bought a piece of property, you had the expectation that you could build and anybody else that bought a property has the expectation that they can build on their property.
But the government does.
And, and where's the cutoff? You know, Mr. Gray's family was here before my family. If his family was in charge, they could have said my family couldn't have moved here. My family might have been here before your family. Maybe we would have decided you couldn't have been here. Who gets to decide who gets to move to Pasco County and who doesn't get to move to Pasco County? We don't get to build a wall around Pasco County and stop people from coming to Pasco County. What we do is we try to make the best community with what we've got. We can't zone everybody out. We can't stop all people from building on their property. And you'd be just as mad if I said you couldn't build on your property.
We have to balance the rights of the property owners with the people that are surrounding them, the neighbors. And so we can't, all's we are is the intermediary to weigh those options, to weigh the rights of the property owner that wants to develop their property and the people that neighbor them. And to make sure that, you know, we allow them to do what's allowed within the law, but at the same time, something that's not onerous on the people that are around them. So that's, that's what our role is. We can't just say, we're gonna stop development or we're gonna stop allowing property owners to exercise their rights.
I understand that, because where I lived, before we could build, we had the same situation. And the only person that protested was a railroad. And they said we had to be literally 100 foot away from the track, which. a hundred foot away from the track, which I understood, and it was complied. But, you know, my concern is, whether it's mobile home park or six hundred and seventy-two homes, where are, where are they going to get the water from? Where is the water going to go to when it rains? I mean, literally, just-
And they come in for a development application. They're going to have to demonstrate that they can get water, that they can dispose of sewage, that they can properly drain, drain storm water without flooding somebody else. And I can tell you, because I do this every day for a living, that there is an entire building in Newport Ritchie filled with these people down here who do nothing but ask me a litany of questions about how I'm going to bring water to the site, get rid of the sewer, and not flood the neighbors. And it is a very long and expensive and grueling process. And then when I'm done with Pasco County doing it, then I turn around and I do it with the state of Florida and sometimes the federal government. It's not an easy process. I can assure you, people look at all of these things. And he does it for that living, I do it for a living, and that gentleman over there does it for a living.
It doesn't mean the stakes are never made, you know, because sometimes there are bad engineering, that we've seen instances of that in the past. But we learn from those things, and we try to engineer things better. And I think overall, we're doing a pretty good job of it. Like I said, it doesn't mean that there's never going to be another flood, there's never, because we're also dealing with Mother Nature that can't, you know, that doesn't have a rulebook to follow, right?
Exactly.
So, you know, there's no engineer that can design around a hundred-year storm, right? You're going to have flooding that you've never seen before when you have a storm like that come through. So we learn from those things, and we try to do a better job in engineering going forward, but-
Although, most of the flooding we have from the hurricanes was in developments that were built before we had-
Correct.
Swift mode and county regulations.
And that's what we've learned from, yeah.
All right. Thank you for your time. You've answered my questions.
All right.
And I appreciate it.
Good, thank you. Thank you for coming. Will, would you like to make some comments too? Will is with the county.
And also, you need to give the applicant at least an opportunity to rebuttal if he wants to. I love you.
I'll wait until next week.
Okay, all right. Wait, wait, before Williams, you speaking in a public comment too?
Yeah.
You should let, you don't want to speak on the 7th then?
No.
We only get one chance, you know?
I agree.
And you already had your chance today.
She'll figure out a way to talk.
Nancy Hayeswood, three four one one oh, a nice place. I really didn't want to get involved with this, but maybe we need some new rules and regulations. And I have seen flooding lately. I hear about it all the time. So, and I don't want to drink treated sewage water for lack of water down the line either. So there, there needs to be something else here. And I know you all are facing these rules and regulations, and there's nothing you can do. We just need some different ones because we are almost built out to the max. Everybody feels like they've got a yoke over their neck trying to get through the traffic and sometimes flooding. So I'm sorry, and I know you guys do the best you can within the circumstances. Thank you.
Well, I guess what I would say is, if you want to propose some rules and regulations, that would be a help. I hear a lot of people, we need to do this, we need, everybody tells us what we don't need to do, but nobody comes here with a constructive suggestion on how to do it.
Okay.
And they will also say, and maybe the county attorney can enlighten us all.
Got an answer, of course.
But the state legislature is now going to stop us from changing a bunch of regulations too, so.
But I could say that maybe your rules and regulations could be changed on the amount of development before it starts impacting our natural resources. Like, before it starts impacting the water we drink that might have to be changed to treated sewage water. I don't think that's right to the citizens of this county to make those type of questions. And if we sat down in roundtable meetings and you could actually get some citizens there, I'll volunteer to go, maybe we can find different ways around this. And satisfy the developer too. I don't think they should not make money, but there's got to be another answer here. I'm sorry, I feel bad about taking up your time. Thank you all.
Thank you. As usual, you do a good job.
And for what it's worth, we're probably a long ways off from having to drink treated sewage water, like you say. We're part, we're part of a larger Tampa Bay area of water, it's called Tampa Bay Water, where we share between counties. There's desalination plants that are at very small fractions of their capacity.
And there are, we're a lot closer to things there.
There's, there's plenty of capacity in the system as it stands. Now, it doesn't mean we can't get to that issue, that point at some point in the future where it's going to issue, but we can, we can plan for that.
Will? Come on up. Yeah. Wait a minute, Will.
Only, only to the extent you want to, Will, because this is not the full public hearing. This is just, do you want to add any-
Yeah, if there's anything you want to add to those comments, the questions.
I mean, if I can have the applicants, I'll wait till August. I'd prefer that. I don't think there's any reason to speak to, to this until then.
All right, is that, well, he's, I don't think you're going, he may not be here.
Oh, here, I'll, I'll give a-
So he might just like to hear some responses that you have to, to his particular questions.
William Vermillion, planning development economic growth. Like Commissioner Moody pointed out, the property's been zoned largely RMH since nineteen seventy-five. The future land use has been largely residential nine since at least two thousand and six.
Will, can I stop you? When did we get our first zoning code in this county?
Nineteen seventy-five, it is original zoning.
So that's an original zoning.
Yes, sir. Residential nine. Currently, the project is roughly six point two dwelling units an acre, which is underneath the allowable density for the total size of the hundred and eighteen acres, and is a product type that the county views could be more beneficial to the area in being single-family detached than what's currently allowed in the, the original zoning. There's no access being proposed to Forbes Road. It's currently substandard. And there's no access being proposed to Shanken Road either. That the applicant is giving right of way along their portion of Forbes Road, Shanken Road, as well as for the Vision Road, the Daughtry Extension. Should sufficient right of way ever be acquired by the county to make those standard, it's a long way in the future because those are all individual lot owners, and acquiring that amount of right of way from individual owners would take a significant amount of time. And County Road fifty-four currently has adequate capacity right now, even with this development's proposed traffic, roughly sitting with the proposed traffic around a point eight VC ratio. One point oh is generally the threshold we look for for a failing segment of road.
Did you want to address the provision of water and sewer since-
Absolutely. So the applicant was working with us as well as the City of Zephyr Hills. This does a, but a portion of city-owned property, which is along that CSX line. We've been talking to the City of Zephyr Hills, their director for the better part of two and a half years on this. They haven't had water capacity for that two and a half years. However, in these conditions of approval, if the applicant cannot secure water capacity from the City of Zephyr Hills, they will be required to extend county utilities from Island Boulevard to their site in order to develop, because the county does have sufficient capacity for the development.
Okay. Is that it?
Thank you.
Anything? That's it?
That's it. I appreciate your time.
Any questions around here?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that I know we got an email, somebody asking about school capacity. I'm sure I'll repeat this in August as well, but we, you know, the reason I'm up here is to look at development through the lens of school capacity. And so just for the record, the schools out in Zephyr Hills, Woodland Elementary is projected to be at eighty percent next year. West Zephyr Hills Elementary is projected to be at eighty percent next year. Stewart Middle is projected to be at eighty-eight percent next year. And Zephyr Hills High is projected to be at eighty-five percent next year. So we do strive to keep our, certainly, we do have some schools that are over capacity and we're working to remedy that, but we do work very hard to try to keep our schools at or below capacity.
Mr. Williams, I did see on the, on, when I was looking through this packet, it showed that the projected middle school, I think it was, were going to be over capacity slightly with the projected build out, entire build out of this project. But I didn't know what projects you had coming online, middle school-wise. I think we were just over a hundred and two percent of that.
Sure. So part of that, and you're right, there are, you know, Two Rivers is zoned for Stewart Middle and Zephyr Hills High, but we are planning to open a K eight in Two Rivers in two thousand and twenty-eight. So that should provide, keep that number-
By the time this project's built out.
Yes, yes.
Maria, thanks, Rith.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Okay. So nothing for you, Clark? Okay. All right. So we have a request for a continuance?
I'm sorry. I just want to say one thing. When you were saying that, or-
I'm sorry, you're going to have to come up to the mic if you don't mind.
I just wanted to ask a question that he was-
You're going to have to repeat who you are because he's keeping the record going.
Okay. Jose Roldan, four zero zero four zero Lindbrook Drive, Zephyr Hills, Florida, three three five four zero. I just had a question. He was saying fifty-four, that the road is sufficient enough if, if that's where the access is going to be for all this. Like, how many cars, you know, supposedly, will there be either way, whether it's a trailer park or six hundred and seventy-two? Because it's only two lanes, and it can be difficult at times to get out and out.
Sir, so when the applicant, I don't know if it's in the current packet, William.
It is.
There's a, there's a full traffic analysis in, on the agenda that you can look at and answer all of those questions.
Okay.
And also, when, if a developer gets the permission to build these units, he has to pay an impact fee on each home that he builds there. And those, that impact fee includes money for roads, you know, utilities, schools.
Okay.
It amounts to almost thirty thousand dollars a home. The developer has to pay in order to build that home. And so that's what, you were asking earlier where the money comes from to build these roads.
Okay.
And the reason they don't build them in advance is because they don't get the impact fees to pay for it until they start to build.
Okay.
So chicken in the egg scenario with infrastructure, you have to have the tax revenue or the impact fees-
Makes sense.
To be able to support it before you can build it.
But regardless, the important point is that he was asking about Forbes Road, which this project is not going to connect to Forbes Road, so the county wouldn't be using impact fees to improve it anyway.
No, no, but, but there is money to improve the road because you're asking about fifty-four just now.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, sure, no problem. Okay.
Clark, since, just one last time, just making sure you know how many more. I, I'm trying to give you all your due process. Do you, you want to say anything? Okay.
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, all right, okay.
He just spoke.
He technically is supposed to get rebuttal for any time in the public speech, so I just want to make sure he's okay with that.
All right. Okay.
Clark's going to get you for missing due process one of these days.
He's, he had plenty of chances for due process.
So, so you want to approve the, did we approve that one already?
Continuance.
Yeah. I think you had a motion for continuance.
Move continuance to the August seventh meeting in Dexity.
Second. Okay, we had a motion.
Second.
And we had a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, so it's going to be continued in August the seventh. So if you can make it again, obviously, you're welcome. So we'll go from there. Okay?
That's the last item that we had on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's second, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at seven two seven eight three four three six one one.
Three, two, one, cut.
This recreation complex is also the largest indoor facility built in Pasco County in a park facility in thirty years.
This is for the entire community. This is what makes Pasco County premier and this park's premier. It doesn't matter what it is, it's here for you. We're excited about it. Park and Recreations have done a tremendous job, not only at this facility, but throughout the county, and we're just so happy it's open now.
Yeah, I mean, we're basically trying to encompass everybody and include everybody, all-inclusive programs as well with our inclusive playground.
Obviously, we have a gymnasium. We have six pickleball courts, two volleyball courts, one full regulation basketball court, and then two side courts. So that in itself will bring a lot of athletics, a lot of programming for the older population with pickleball. When we go into our multipurpose rooms, we'll do anything from yoga to fitness classes to toddler time classes. We have zumba, salsa dancing, so really, a wide scale of variety.
The project is funded by park impact fees, which is driven by, obviously, development. There's a single-family fee per individual home, and all the fees that are collected is basically what we use to, to build this facility. I think there are essential services that impact the quality of life, and I think it won't take very long for the community in Wesley Chapel to realize how impactful and meaningful these type of services and a complex like this is.
The team has been amazing. They are so excited. You go over there and take a tour, Deanna, Dennis, and the whole crew over there, they cannot wait to showcase this amazing facility for our citizens of Pasco County. Thank you to all the team there. Thank you to all the team there.